Yeah.
What about you?
On my side, yeah.
Yeah, good, good. I can't complain, you know?
Right.
Hey, I happen to see you guys faces coming up and I see my name. Uh, is there something wrong? Can you guys do hear me?
No. Tap, tap on your name and then you will see where you can activate a camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hit that for my name.
Tap on your name, yeah.
Okay.
We are live on YouTube and I am recording this, this meeting, so. Now I'm gonna hide myself and you guys have your meeting.
It's already on YouTube?
It is. Everything's all set and I'm gonna mute myself, so it's, it's being recorded and it's live on YouTube, so I'm gonna mute myself now.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Okay, can I have a call of the roll, please? Is he not with us?
Jeffrey Polcaster, Eric Polcaster.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, Clifford Griffin.
Here.
Jeff Atwell, here. Eric Frausto.
Here.
Joseph Martin.
Here.
Mike Cindy.
Here.
Uh, who am I missing? Vonda Harding. Absent. And who am I missing?
Brandon, Brandon Richardella.
Uh, Brandon Richardella. Absent.
Okay. So it sounds like we have a quorum.
We have five people.
Okay.
We have Joseph, Clifford, Eric, Michael and Jeffrey.
Okay. Uh, Howard, why don't you go on and do what it is you said you were going to do?
Okay. So everyone, um, the applicant is on the phone, but he's not through the computer. So what I'll do is I'll do the presentation on behalf of the applicant. I'll go over the, uh, the staff report and what have you, go over the preliminary stuff and then we can also comment or speak on the particularities that anyone might have. So what I'll do is I'll go over the agenda that's, uh, shown currently on the screen. What I'll do is I'll, I'll mention the agenda, roll call has been done. We'll do the public comment. Old business and new business, so, uh, I'll start. So a public notice of the zoning board of appeals hearing to be held remotely on Thursday, April 2nd, 2020 at 7:30 PM as permitted by executive order 2020 dash 07, which was signed by Illinois Governor JB Pritzker on Monday, March 16th, 2020 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. To participate, please download the Zoom Cloud Meetings app or call 312-626-6799. And once that person or whoever calls in, they need to put in the webinar ID number, which is 577-472-511 and press pound. And once you press pound, it's gonna ask you for a password. There's no password, just press pound again and whoever is on will be able to join us through the phone. Or you could find us online under zoom.us backslash J backslash 577-472-511. Roll call was taken. Public comment, is there anyone from the public would like to speak on anything related to zoning? Anyone? Okay. So, uh, new business originally, and you see it here, originally we had two applications to be heard tonight. I was speaking with, uh, Alvarez Alexander via the internet. Uh, we were going back and forth via email. And he told me, uh, late Friday and he reaffirmed today that, uh, he's withdrawing his application. So what I'll do is I'll just read the, uh, the description of the new business and I'll read into the record, uh, how he withdrew. So we have that encapsulated and then we can move to, uh, new business number two, which would be the, the one we're hearing today. So let me read the first one. So the board will review an applicant's request for a special use to allow for an automobile body and fender shop and automobile repair shop in the general industrial district I dash two and a special use for a used car dealers via their commercial district C dash one designation. The applicant would like to create a one-stop business facility where he repairs vehicles, engine and bodywork and sells vehicles online via the internet. The new business is located in a general industrial district in Blue Island. The address is 13842 dash 13844 South Harrison Avenue. This is an industrial, uh, section of the city. The applicant was Alvarez Alexander and I'll put onto the screen his withdrawal, which I sent a copy to everyone. And I'll, I'll read, uh, what's on the screen right now, so we have it, uh, recorded. He writes, uh, hello, Howard, I'm officially withdrawing your special use application for 13842 through 13844 South Harrison Avenue. At this time, we and the owner could not reach an agreement. Thanks for your amazing effort during this time. So that's the record for this one. I also forgot to mention something. Under old business, we would have reviewed the minutes from the last meeting. Last meeting, we had a quorum where we reviewed the, uh, minutes of the cannabis ordinance. Remember, we had two special meetings. Uh, one was in December 12th, 2019 and the second meeting was January 6th, 2020. So we did have a quorum for that, uh, and we did vote, uh, the zoning board of appeals voted for the minutes. So that minutes would have been today's minutes, where we were just reaffirming. Since I was not able to prepare the minutes because I did not have access to the city hall, uh, when I was creating this, um, agenda, my concern was to get the information as soon as possible and get the Zoom information out there. So if anyone had any questions or concerns, they could have called me or emailed me, so. I sent a copy of the minutes. If, if everyone had an opportunity to review it, uh, it would be nice if I have any comments. Any comments or suggestions, or did I do anything wrong with the minutes, any errors?
No.
Okay.
Oh, we're good.
Okay, thank you. So what I'll do is in the next zoning hearing, we'll probably have two sets of minutes, the minutes from the cannabis one that we were, that was approved and the minutes for this meeting. So. I'm gonna read into the record, new business. So that's a finishing up with housekeeping. So the, the new business, the applicant is on the phone, Charles Comerford. I'll read, uh, the description of the new business and the agenda. The board will review the owner's request for a special use to allow for retail and personal service establishment in the limited industrial district I dash two, I dash one via their commercial district C dash one designation. Tire repairs, tire sales will be done at this business location, which is situated in a limited, limited industrial district neighborhood. Again, the applicant and business owner and property owner, his name is Charles Comerford. And the property is Jeans Drive-In Cleaners, which is located at 12401 Vincent's Avenue. So that's the, uh, uh, reading the description for the new business for the meeting. What I'll do now is I'm gonna populate the, uh, staff report, so people can read and see what I'm presenting. So since Charles is on the phone, it's very hard for him to notice where we are in the meeting. I'm gonna do the presentation on his behalf with my, uh, staff report and then the chair and the board members can ask him questions. So let me go over the, um, the staff report. So again, Charles Comerford, he's applying for a special use for retail and personal service establishment in a limited industrial district I dash one. Uh, notification, notification requirements for this application has been satisfied. Illegal notice was published in the Daily South Town and a sign was posted on the property, uh, in the grassy area in front of the parking lot facing the building. Well, in this situation, uh, the, uh, property owner gave me access inside to put the sign in the window. The other one was the other applicant. So staff analysis. Charles Comerford, who owns Jeans Dry-In Cleaners, is located at 12401 Vincent's Avenue. He's interested in selling his property to Jesus Lopez, who owns Lopez Tire Shop at 2407 York Street in Blue Island. Mr. Comerford would like to sell his zoning parcel, which consists of three separate pins. So under the, uh, zoning classification, under the zoning statutes of the state, even though there are three smaller pieces of properties, we for, for, uh, for argument's sake, we call it a zoning parcel. We treat it as one property. So in reality, he's selling three properties to Jesus Lopez, who's a local and very popular business owner in Blue Island. Um, and he's looking to purchase, Mr. Lopez is looking to purchase the property from Mr. Comerford, so he can open up his tire repair facility. So, uh, let me go over a little bit of the, uh, materials here. Jeans Drive-In Cleaners has been in existence for 43 years and that's per, um, Charles Comerford's, uh, uh, comment. And, um, record. This business has been there for many decades, right? Uh, and it has a huge pole sign and the architecture is a little dated. It's, uh, circa 1960s, 1970s, right? So. To go over the materials, the retail and personal service establishment, that's the use that the, uh, tire shop is proposing to do, Mr. Lopez. It is not permitted by right in the, uh, industrial one zone. It's only allowed by a special use. Uh, Mr. Comerford understands this, that he cannot transfer his non-conforming use of a dry cleaner to another non-conforming use of a tire repair shop without a special use, hence the reason why we're having this meeting tonight. Uh, and that needs to go through the planning, the zoning, uh, committee, the community development committee and the city council. Just to, uh, speak a little bit about this. I've done research on the property. I couldn't find any special use from, let's say, 40 years ago in the building records. I have nothing to document that this was officially approved in one way or another, how it, how it happened, I'm not sure. So it's a non-conforming use. So just to go over a little bit of what I wrote in my staff report. If Mr. Comerford was selling the property to me and I was interested in purchasing the property and running a dry cleaners, then I would be allowed to continue the non-conforming use if it's within a six-month period. However, Mr. Comerford, um, is interested in selling to a person that wants to do tire repair, replacement and selling tires that are new. So the non-conforming use is new. It would be considered, uh, different from the dry cleaning, so hence the reason why we're having this special use. So, um, Mr. Lopez has been in business for, I have it right here, 18 years. The Uptown Transit Oriented Development District, uh, in the Uptown area. He's been in that area for 18 years. He's very popular in the sense that many people have gone to, up to repair a flat tire. I'm one of those. Earlier last year, I had a flat tire and I had to replace my tire also. So I'm well, well-versed with the business and we're situated in the complexities of where you park your car, what you're doing beyond the street. Hence the reason why Mr. Lopez would like to move to a new site, a site that can handle multiple cars waiting to have a tire repaired or replaced. A place for people to sit down or use the bathroom if they need to. So this situat-, this property, uh, Jeans Drive-In Cleaner would be ideal for Mr. Lopez to move in and to expand his business. So my, uh, staff report goes more about the details that, um, it's, uh, even though this is a semi-industrial, um, district and that's the type of uses we would like to see by right, uh, however, uh, the Lopez Tire Shop, the prospective business that might be moving into this property, uh, will, uh, be, will be similar to the other two businesses that are there, that is budding the property currently. Uh, Jeans Drive-In Cleaner, right? To the north, we have, uh, WW Foreign Auto, auto parts, right? Where you have, uh, a huge lot with cars and people are purchasing parts there. And to the south of the, uh, Jeans Drive-In Cleaners, you have Bob's Auto Body. So if, uh, Lopez moves into this property, then you would have three businesses consecutively that are auto, auto-oriented or vehicular-oriented. So I think that's a plus for the community, even though it's not a industrial use or semi-industrial use. Lem-, uh, I could go over the standards of special use after we have our discussion, but I also would like to note, we met before, the planning commissioners reviewed the application right before us, uh, and they approved it seven zero unanimously. They had no, they had no concerns or reservation about the business. They only, they only had some concerns about the, uh, the upkeep of the building, the upkeep of the physical property like the asphalt, it's starting to crack. And, uh, there were some questions about the storage, which Mr. Comerford can answer once I'm done with this. So, um, scrolling down. Are the conditions and guarantees of the zoning board of appeals would like to put additional conditions or requirements? Then of course, uh, additional staff recommendation, I have none at the moment. Uh, but if the zoning board feels like there should be conditions attached, this is the time to say it. Uh, just to continue going with this application, a zoning relief application for a special use was submitted, a justification was, was submitted, required for the finding of the special use, legal description was submitted, a warranty deed was submitted, a plan of survey, a copy of pay taxes were submitted, site photographs and the application fee was paid. On the fourth page, which I have here, which I'll minimize so everyone could see, I have, uh, the zoning map that shows the limited industrial zone and across the street is the residential R1, which is colored in yellow. And then the second photograph is an aerial view, uh, from Cook County GIS board that shows the three properties, especially the three pins that are shown on the plan. So you have an idea how the property is situated. The first top is from the beginning to the end of the property is one contiguous lot. The bottom is two smaller lots, which butts each other. You have a rectangle with three property pins. And then on the final page is, uh, photos that I've took, I've taken, which shows the property, the entrance, the existing sign, the canopy and the driveway, right? And then the second photo, which I'm scrolling down to, shows the, um, the back portion of the property where there's clearly stored vehicles. I like to make a comment on this. Uh, this storage or secondary use is allowed by this zone. We do allow for warehousing either inside or outside, so there's nothing wrong with this, but these are some of the questions that were raised by the planning commissioners in the earlier meeting. Again, they voted seven zero to approve the, uh, special use and send it to the zoning board of appeals. So now I'm just gonna scroll up and just let, uh, Clifford conduct the meeting as the chair, calling on to Charles Comerford.
Okay. In your own words, Mr. Comerford, could you please explain to us? I know he has given us the overview, but also would you entertain questions, uh, from the council members as to, uh, your interest here in what your plans are?
I welcome any questions and I'll answer them fully. My interest is in seeing that they, uh, another Blue Island business that's been there for a long time. We've been there a long time and as I previously explained, I had other people approach me about that property, but I felt the most comfortable with Mr. Lopez. I, I think that he understands Blue Island and, um, because I was a small business owner, I guess I relate to another small business owner.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any questions for him?
I don't have a, a question, but, uh, this is Martin. I speak about Mr. Lopez's business, which I have visited on, uh, a few occasions and I think this would be a better location for, excuse me, my phone, uh, that'd be a better location of this business because where he is right now, although it's a good business for our city, the parking is very restricted over there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm aware of that. Let me ask you this, was there anything said by the other two businesses that, that, uh, that buttress, uh, the cleaners? Express anything?
Charles, I think this question is directed towards you.
Okay, I, I apologize. I wasn't sure. No, there hasn't been any concerns. Uh, I spoke personally with, uh, Bob Worniac from Bob's Auto and he was familiar with Mr. Lopez and to quote him, he says he's a good guy. Uh, the owner of W and W is actually the parents, the son Rudy runs the business. I haven't had any response from him, either negative or positive. And I assume with the signage being in the window, if he did have an objection, he'd be on the phone. Uh, I get along with my neighbors and I think it's a good fit for both of them.
Okay. All right, does anyone else have any questions?
The, the signage that's up there is pretty, pretty iconic for Blue Island. Is there a way to keep that signage or do something with it in the, the new business? Just because people know that sign, it's been in Blue Island forever and it really, um, has a lot of character.
Um, it certainly, I'm sorry, you addressing me or should I just be muted? Certainly, um, those vintage signs, uh, what I had thought is it, I don't know what Mr. Lopez's plans are, but if somebody in the historical society would be interested in similar to what they did for Bartle, those neon signs from the 1950 era, they are disappearing. There's actually museums that strictly have old neon signs. I can't control what Mr. Lopez's plans are for it, but I'm sure he'd be receptive to anything that the city were to suggest.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought about even possibly leaving it there, you know, like the Jebins sign is still up on Jebins, even though that'll eventually probably be a new business, that sign will still stay. And just the, the, the character, whether the historical site it takes, I just don't want to lose that sign. It's just so iconic.
I understand and it's a landmark, it really is. I mean, I didn't want to sound like I was immodest, but, um, we had people come by and just take pictures of the sign. I mean, it is, it is a landmark. It's, it's an era that's gone by.
But. Should a fire episode help? I mean, that really made a big difference in terms of that sign being a little more popular in town.
You wouldn't believe how many people contacted me after the, uh, viewing of that episode with concerns that something legitimately had happened. And I had to explain to everybody that it was just a movie set, but yes, it did bring a lot of attention to us.
So, uh, I'd like to interject for a moment. Uh, zoning wise, uh, most likely that sign will come down because the, uh, community development committee, which are the keepers of the signage, signage variances and they're the ones that review signage per se, will most likely prefer a monument sign, which fits to the new requirements of the sign code. I suggested also, like Charles did momentarily, uh, if the historical society of Blue Island would like to take ownership of the sign, so that piece of history does not get lost. Looking at the sign, I'm gonna scroll down. Even if, let's say, there was a variance, it would be very hard to replace the face.
Yeah.
Replace the face of the existing sign. Uh, by doing that, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna tarnish the, the historic nostalgic look of a dry cleaner sign.
Right.
So I think it's hard to even, you know, change the face, even if, if the new person, Mr. Lopez, goes through the, uh, variance process at the community development committee. So most likely there were gonna be a monument sign because of course the, uh, the new, the new way of looking at signage today, today's society is to have smaller signs that are more pedestrian friendly versus automobile oriented like this one was 40 years ago. I do agree, it looks very, uh, nostalgic, you know, circa 1960s, 70s signage that were very expressive in that period. But so far, uh, Mr. Lopez has not said anything about what he would like to do with this sign if he takes over ownership of this property.
All right, any other question?
My, uh, my question would be more to, or geared towards, um, towards the city, not, not, not Mr., um, Comfort, um. Lately, uh, down by the old Clark property, there has been multiple dumpings of, of, uh, used tires. That would be the only concern that, that, that I could, um, I could bring up is the disposal of used tires by such businesses. I, I don't know if anybody's driven up and down the old, uh, Clark, uh, street there. I, I forget, I.
No, I haven't.
It's up against the, uh, the old Clark oil plant and, uh, Kedzie there. Uh, so that would be like my only concern per se. Uh, the, the, the disposal of these, these tires, I mean, um, you can clearly see it's tire businesses that, that are dumping, you know, um, used tires in, 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 in bulk per se.
Yeah, I'm a high school teacher and we have to pay for our tires to be taken from us.
Yeah, yeah.
So the idea of dumping them somewhere saves them a ton of money if they're dumping in large bulk.
Exactly, so.
So I, I guess that would be a concern of mine too with, um, you know, with any business in town, but that in particular because it is a tire business. I seen them very, I probably saw 50 tires on the Calseg Trail the other day. I went up for a walk. Basically off of Ashland right there, you know, same thing where people dump tires.
So I mean, uh, they, these businesses do charge, do have a disposal, uh, charge, usually an amount of $3. I don't know if it's still $3, uh, maybe I'm dating myself, but, uh, like you said, it, it, it's, it's a money, it's a money thing and if, uh, you know, we would just have to monitor that. I'm pretty sure Mr. Lopez, um, you know, is, uh, like you said, I, I've dealt with him, with his business myself and, uh, you know, like I said, I'd like to, to, uh, express that and, but, uh, like I said, we, we should all just keep that in the back of our mind, you know, as far as, uh, the disposable, the disposal aspect of, of, of the business.
I'd like to ask one question. I'd like to ask one question. Mr. Lopez has been in Blue Island and doing business with us, uh, for what about eight, 18 years or better? Have any, I, I don't know of any problem. Does anyone else know any problem we have with him?
No, whatsoever. Everyone I know loves him. I mean, they're so great helping people in and out of that parking spot. You know, they're really professional. My wife had to go there a few weeks back and, you know, some other place wanted a seller of a brand new tire. They were able to repair it. So I think, you know, everyone has, it's kind of much the same to say to them. I think what Eric is just saying, just in general, making sure that we keep an eye out for the city as a whole and no one is, is taking advantage.
Not, not specifically, not specifically against Mr. Lopez, not at all. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, as a city, as a community, as a concern, it should be in, in, uh, you know, it should be in our, in, in our mind and, uh, but, uh, moving forward, uh, I know I have never had a problem. Uh, I've been there multiple times. Like you said, Michael, uh, very professional. And they will, they will tell you if it, if the tire needs to be changed, they will. If it can be salvaged, they do that also.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other?
Clifford, can I interject? So, uh, Jesus Lopez will have to go through a business license application of, with the approval of planning, zoning, community development and the city council. Uh, I could approve it zoning wise and then it'll go through building and fire review. Uh, what we can ask for during the business license application, when he submits an architectural dream, architectural drawn plan, is how he's gonna dispose his tires. If he has a, a tire plan where he keeps them in a trailer and then someone picks them up and removes them off-site, I could ask for that type of information.
Yeah, that would be perfect. That would be, that would be perfect.
That'd be great, Howard.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Okay. With that in mind, first of all, what we need to do is to have a motion to accept the recommendation from the planning commission.
I saw, I saw move.
Okay.
All right. I second Joseph Martin. I, I second.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Clifford Griffin?
Yes.
Jeff Atwell, yes. Uh, Mike Cindy?
Yes.
Eric Frousso?
Yes.
Joseph Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to nothing.
Okay. With that exception of that, now what we need to move on to is to have either a re-, a recommendation to approve this or to not approve. So do I have such a motion in either direction?
I'll make a recommendation to approve.
I second.
Okay, slow down. I'm, I'm writing this down.
Now, is there any addition that we need to add to this?
Who's the second one? Who's second it?
Eric Frousso.
Eric.
I don't think so because they have to apply for their license. Now, did it apply for a new license or is it just a matter of changing locations?
No, they have to apply for a new license. So he, he's going to surrender the old license, business license at the old location and he's going to apply for a new one. So when a person applies for a new business license application, that allows for the city, uh, especially building and fire to do their reviews to bring the building up to code if it needs to be done. And during that process, we could also talk about the upkeep of the property, like, you know, possibly, uh, new paving for the asphalt, for the driveway, uh, new striping where customers will be parking. So the site plan component of the business license application will be captured in the, uh, building permit process with me, the building official and the fire chief.
And that's what I would like to see added to it as well.
As a condition?
Yes, because if you look at Bob's business there, you know, uh, he would at least have a consistent, uh, look as you go down the street.
Okay, so I'm writing this condition now that the, uh, ZBA would like, uh, would like for the, uh, building department to enforce the upkeep improvement maintenance of the property. Maintenance of the property. In regards to what? The building? The awning?
The building as well as the asphalt.
Right.
Now, he's going to have to make some modifications to the building just to be able to try and pull a car in there to do a tire.
Right, but most likely he's going to probably put, um, garage doors to bring others in. So the building, the awning is the, there's a section and you see it in the photo that it looked like it's been hit by a truck.
Yeah.
That needs to be repaired like here, as I zoomed in right here where I moved the cursor. And then the pavement like curb cut striping and, uh, possibly new asphalt. So this will be the condition that will be put on to this, uh, special, special use that will go to the community development committee hopefully next week, the Wednesday, the eighth of April, which they're going to review and then it goes to the, uh, next regular city council meeting.
Now, does anybody have any questions regarding the standards on this particular property?
Which I'll scroll over here.
What he read before.
Do, do you want me to speak a little bit about the standards and the, uh, staff report?
Well, if they all understand it and don't have any question with it, as long as they, you know, they're in agreement with it, then that's fine. Does anybody have any questions?
I have none.
I, I have none.
All right.
Nope.
All right. With that, do I have a re-, uh, a motion for a recommendation for this from someone?
I had a recommendation to accept the motion.
Okay.
I second Joseph. I second.
Joseph second. Okay.
Okay. Can I have a roll call?
Clifford Griffin?
Yes.
Jeff Atwell, yes. Mike Cindy?
Yes.
Eric Frousso?
Yes.
And, uh, Joseph Martin?
Yes.
So we have a, a five-zero approval. What I'll do is when I, uh, uh, work on the minutes, because I have to get the minutes by the next meeting at community development, I'll be in communication with the chair to go over the condition that was attached with this special use to make sure that the chair is fine with the, uh, stuff that I write as a condition. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
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 Okay. Anything else? Is the client still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, we approved it for you, so you're going to probably have to go through this a couple of more times, but, uh, congratulations to you.
And I thank you all sincerely.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Stay safe.
You too as well. Okay, Howard, is there anything else?
Uh, nothing else for tonight. Uh, the minutes, I missed, I missed putting the minutes on the agenda as an old item, but it's fine. We'll, we'll do it in the next meeting.
Okay.
And now I'll, now contact Charles Comerford and, and for him to call in to the community development committee meeting next week. Same process. He'll probably speak on his behalf if the committee has any questions.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, do I have a motion for an adjournment?
I second.
All right, slow down. Uh, Joseph's first. Who seconded?
Eric.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, Eric second. Good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Set, uh, eight eleven. The time of adjournment.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. Be safe.
You too.
Stay safe.